Okay. Thanks for coming, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. Just a reminder to all that this meeting is being recorded by Berniston-Northfield Community Television for future broadcast on your local cable channel. This meeting may also be streamed live on their Facebook page when able. It is a few minutes after 6:00 on March 6th. And our main goal tonight is to vote our budget. So, are there any citizens' comments? Lois?
I have two things that I want to comment on. One is that recently, some of the administration here refers to the position that the Finance Committee of the four towns that they've had these meetings and set their position. The other thing I want to comment on is, I'm getting calls like never before in comments about your vote on the superintendent's salary and contract, questioning whether that is appropriate at this time, whether... You haven't done anything for your credibility, really. Given a five-year contract, compare this to municipalities. We have never given 5% raises, never. And so, people are talking about the fact that we're trying to be believable, you are trying to be believable in what you're doing with the budgets and so forth. And then something like that comes out and you just destroy it.
Anybody else? Okay, let's get started. So, the vote on FY '20 budget is next. Can I just make a comment that the school committee needs to vote each one of these lines separately? So, just a reminder on that.
Okay.
All right, so we all have a revenue and a expense. That's the one that has the $14,272,210 at the top. So, Tanya, you're saying that each assessment, I mean, each line of revenue and each line of...
Just the expenditures.
Okay, just the expenses.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So, if people have a different process they want to use, I'm just going to start at the top, and I'm going to read each category and the amount. And my thought was I would call the vote, like make a motion to approve, and then we can discuss, and then we can vote. Does that sound appropriate? Yeah? Okay. All right. So, the first category is athletics. And the FY '20 recommended number is $191,694. Do I have a motion for that category?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Can we just have a quick recap of the difference between the '19 budget and the '20 budget on that one?
Okay, we did just do that very recently.
Yep, we moved the coaches and the stipend for the athletic director over to its appropriate category.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of $191,694 in the athletics budget for FY '20, please raise your hands for aye.
I don't think I can vote.
Okay.
No.
No.
It's a thumbs down.
And just let me know when you've got, everybody. You're good? Okay. Any votes opposed to that budget? And one abstention. Right? Okay. All right, that's athletics. I'm going to go on to central office. Hi, Jeannie.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm so ready.
So, Jeannie, on page two of your packet is the FY '20 budget.
Thank you.
Revenue and expenditures. We're just going through each of the 16 expenditure lines. We just did athletics, and that's all. So, that's all you missed. Okay, so the central office line for FY '20 is budgeted at $733,000.
Wrong column.
Oh, sorry.
The admin recommended is the column we're using.
Okay. The is budgeted for $697,852.
No move.
Okay, discussion. Tanya, you want a quick recap of each line, right? Robin?
I think it would be good to have it on the record.
So, in particular, we added a curriculum coordinator/grant writer to this particular line. We decreased the overseer's pay by $20,000, and that is basically your net difference in the central office line.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yeah. Sharon did so moved, and who seconded?
Mike.
Mike seconded. Okay. All those in favor of that number for that line item, please raise your hand. Opposed? Going on to elementary administration. This line for FY '20 is budgeted at $293,301.
No move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do you want to briefly?
Yeah?
The main reason for the decrease in this particular line is that we are moving to a stipend format for the principal at Warwick Community School, similar to that at Pearl Roads.
All those in favor of that number for this line? Okay. Opposed? Elementary instructional assistance. This line is budgeted at $182,675 for FY '20. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So, the change in this particular line are increases due to contractual obligations offset by decreases in elementary instructional assistance across the elementary schools in the district.
Okay. Discussion. Jeannie?
Questions, Sue? The elementary instructional assistance decreased evenly between the schools. I know a lot depends on what the needs of the students are. But I'm looking primarily at Berniston. I want to make sure that Berniston isn't shorted the number of instructional assistance they require to educate the students in that town.
So, the elementary instructional assistance is specifically classroom aides. The one-on-ones are in the SPED budget. So, they, it was dependent on student needs and requirements for the students. And that was discussed with the special ed director as well as the administrators.
Okay, I'm not talking the special ed students. I'm talking instruction, classroom instructional assistance, not SPED. That's what we're talking about. Elementary instructional assistance, not the SPED.
John, did you?
Robin, did you want to?
I was just, I'm sure that John had this discussion with the administrators, and he could speak to that.
Right. I don't have a specific list breakdown with me tonight, but I did at the last several meetings. But this was in discussion with the administrators, the special ed director, looking at classrooms and what was required and needed in all of the schools.
And I only have the summaries as a whole, the instructional assistance, not specifically the SPEDs.
Not breakdown by schools.
Well, I have it by school, but the SPED and the regular instructional assistance don't look together.
Why are they?
In my summary. I can find it for you if you give us a second. I don't have the PowerPoint from the meeting that we just had.
Because I believe I've had several communications from Berniston that they were, they have been drastically cut in classroom instructional assistance.
I have it in the PowerPoint. I just don't have the PowerPoint with me. I apologize.
So, that's my concern, that there was too many cuts made for Berniston. It just doesn't leave any leeway.
Berniston also had more instructional assistance at the school than Northfield did to begin with.
Through the classes?
Yes, Northfield, Berniston also has larger classes.
Well, I think Northfield has a couple of large classes, too.
We didn't just slash instructional assistance. I mean, John worked through this process.
No.
But you can't split...
I'm just concerned that the cut is too much, that it's going to be detrimental to the students.
So, the reduction of classroom assistants specifically was two full-time equivalent classroom instructional assistants at Berniston, one of whom is retiring and not being replaced, and Warwick was .6. And those were just classroom assistants, and that added up to the $50,000 in admin changes.
So...
So, the cuts at Northfield and Pearl Roads were specifically special ed instructional assistants, which are in the SPED budget.
There's different sections.
I know, but I wasn't talking about SPED, as I keep repeating myself.
I just, this is the...
I know, I know, and I'm looking. So, by what you're showing me here, it looks like there's no cuts at Northfield.
Not in classroom instructional assistance specifically.
Okay, I'm just, that's what, I'm just, I'm just bringing up the point that there seems to be an overabundance of cuts of instructional assistance for the Berniston Elementary School.
Jess?
Sorry, Robin. Do we have guidelines about class size and how many teachers to instructional assistants we need to have in different classrooms of different sizes, taking into consideration populations of kids who are in those classes? Certainly, we have to have information come from the teachers who are in there and the principals.
We looked at all the classroom sizes. We went actually teacher by teacher, student by student, and class by class. And I said at the public hearing, is this ideal? No. But we have to do what's required, whether special ed services or classroom assistance. And so, we made these cuts, you know, very carefully and with thought. And so, is it ideal? No. But we're looking at what's required and what we need to do as a district, and this is what, this is what we have.
Sharon?
It sounded like Jeannie had something in mind. Jeannie, did you have something in mind?
Well, I've received emails about there being too many cuts on instructional, classroom instructional assistance in Berniston for this, that eventually, that will, that is detrimental to the learning for the students. And that concerns me.
I have, if we want to go back to that, I have a list of the teachers and aides that are in each classroom.
I just, I just feel that there's an imbalance here.
Do I have to push this thing to talk?
No, just call it.
So, classroom sizes, I looked into this back in the fall, and there is no requirements in the classrooms, except I believe for pre-K and I think kindergarten. So, with the amount of students per adult, I believe the average is 5.2 kids right now in our system. And I think that's what we're trying to cut back on. We've had numerous, I've had numerous calls and emails regarding just how many cars in the parking lots at both Northfield and Berniston regarding how much staff there is. Now, I know John did speak with the special ed director and the admin in each of those schools, and made numerous phone calls to get to where they are numbers-wise, what we plan to budget on. So, in all reality, if you had seven classes, say, at Berniston, which, you know, from kindergarten up to sixth grade, if you had a teacher and an aide in each classroom, that's 14 people. We have 14 aides alone. Now, if you have the 14 teacher, you know, the teachers and aides total 14, and then you have the special needs kids with medical disabilities, you add those to it, you still should be below the total of the 14, total of aides. And that's what we're, we're trying to balance out what is needed to what we have now, which is, it seems like an excess. And a lot of people are commenting on that. I know a lot of the people here might not see it that way, but there is other people out there that are sending emails and calling in regards to the overstaffing. So, I give John credit for not cutting any teaching positions or programs to get to where we are budget-wise. Yeah, it'd be nice to have four-to-one student ratio, five-to-two student ratio, be it not reality, it's impossible. We're going to go bankrupt if we continue on down that path.
Thank you.
So, I just have to say something about it, just because I'm a practitioner. It really doesn't have a whole lot to do with the number of children in a room, how much support a classroom needs. It really does not. So, what I am trusting has happened is that administrators and teachers and people that created this budget have had discussions and talked about the needs and made sure that the program is indeed not being cut, that is serving our kids well. I want to say I have never had anyone write to me about too many paras in a building. That's not anything anyone has ever communicated to me. So, I don't know if anyone can, can speak to that and reassure me, but I am hearing from people that, that there are much more significant cuts than it sounds like we're talking about. So, it feels concerning to not feel like I have a good understanding of it all. And that doesn't mean I can't get there, but I'm not really there right now. And, you know, so, you know, we heard in the public budget hearing from one person with concerns, and then we got another email from a person with concerns. And I don't, I don't know how to clarify it. So, I don't know if anyone can help me clarify it.
So, when we looked at all of the schools and the classroom assistants, there were 14 in Berniston, I think 17 in Northfield, I think four maybe. And these include one-to-one paraprofessionals that are required by an IEP. But we're talking here about classroom assistants. We looked at the specific classes, how that would look next year. For example, we have certain students that are moving up to Pioneer that maybe have a, you know, receive services in their class, and we can service that person up here with our existing staff. Or we had other students that weren't going to require a one-to-one for whatever the reason. There were retirements that happened. And so, we went through literally student by student and class by class with the teachers and how that would look next year. And it took a lot of time looking at the specific situations in each building and each classroom. And that's what, that's how we made the decisions, is, you know, we didn't want to cut programming or teaching staff and work. We looked to make efficiencies that wouldn't, you know, it's, like I said, it's not ideal. But I think we're in a situation where we have to be responsible as well. So, we're meeting the needs of the students.
Yep.
And, you know, this was all carefully thought about.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Robin?
I just would echo what you said, Sue. I mean, there are classes for whom having a second adult in the room is vital to the functioning of the room. There are classes that do better without.
Yeah.
And the teachers and the administrators who work with those kids every day, they can tell you real quick on the back of an envelope which class is which.
Yeah. So, John, you feel like you've had those conversations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we've gone through this, you know, extensively and very detailed to get to where we are now. Like I said, it's not ideal, but I think it's what's required and what, what's covered in the students are, you know, their services are going to be met.
Yep.
With this.
Yep.
What we're proposing. And, you know, we took a lot of time doing it, so...
Yep. Okay. Sharon?
I'd like to call a vote on that.
Okay. Anybody else before we call the vote? Jess?
So, I have a not fully formed thought, but I wonder if there's...
You've got to get really close to that mic.
If there's any way that we can be thinking about how we assess the success of this over this year, and whether the needs are getting met in these classrooms. And if there's any, if we can be forward-thinking about if we need to be shifting services around how we're going to be able to do that to support the kids and teachers if this doesn't seem like it's successful.
Yeah. I think that's something we always have to do, is reevaluate and look at the needs. I mean, we have, may have students that move into the district that have certain needs or existing students, and then we can be open to reevaluate. But if we're looking at it now, and we're trying to get to where we need to get, and we took all this, you know, what we couldn't, all this into consideration, had these discussions very carefully, and then we can, we can reassess or reevaluate as things shift like we would anything else.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like there's enough concern on this committee that would be good to make sure we check, keep checking in about it. Okay? All right. So, again, I'm going to say the number. This is the elementary instructional assistant line, $182,675. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for that clarity, you guys. Elementary salaries. The number for this line item is $2,382,18. Do I have a motion?
No move.
That's a second from Mike. Any discussion?
The summary of the increase in this particular line overall is salaries increasing for contractual obligations. We are restoring the PE teacher at .4 at NES. They will no longer be sharing with the high school, nor will the elementary music be sharing staff with PBRS. Co-curricular stipend for an elementary program was moved to the elementary salaries to be in line with its category. And the substitutes by school were decreased and offset by a district-wide long-term substitute budget. And we are holding off on restoring an additional .5 full-time equivalent tech integration specialist, which is the administration change number that you see to the right.
Discussion? Any more? All right, let's call the vote. All those in favor of that number for this line, please raise your hand. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I can't see everybody, so I'm asking each one. All right. The next line is elementary supplies. The number is $74,525. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Sue?
Yeah, Jeannie.
It's Jeannie down here.
Yep.
Does that include the nurses' supplies, or is that under? I know that there was a separate line, a separate item, and I don't see nursing supplies listed.
It's in elementary supplies.
It is in elementary supplies.
So, the reason for the increase in this particular line item is the shared health supplies increase due to replacing expiring AEDs in each school. The textbook and library supply lines were restored that were previously cut. ELA supplies increased due to ELA curriculum updates needed, and other supply lines were decreased by principals based on the needs of each school.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are there, the AEDs, is there one in each school? Or how do they go? Thank you, Sharon. And is this repla, okay, I'm just looking.
No, you go.
I was just presented the schedule and...
This is, this is batteries. They're down here.
All right. My next question, have they looked into a trade-in program? There is a trade-in program for AEDs. I'm just throwing it out, too.
I know there is, huh, refurbishing program?
No. There is a trade-in program.
Sharon?
This was presented several weeks ago, and it was researched by our nurse leader in the district. And this was her recommendation after speaking with the representative from Zul, who manufactures the AEDs. They did have an AED that malfunctioned last fall. So, the representative came out and looked at all of them, and he said, anything before 2005 needs to be replaced.
Thank you.
That's the safety of it. And we needed new, we need new pads, we need new EpiPens, we need so many other things. So, they put it on a kind of a rotating basis, so the district didn't get hit all at once with these huge expenses.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are we ready for the vote? All right, all those in favor of that number for this line, please raise your hand. Okay. That was everybody, right? All right. Facilities. The FY '20 budget for facilities is $1,026,753.
So, the facilities decreased overall primarily due to the fact that we were able to capture a lower rate for our fuel this year of $1.93, which was previously $2.67. All of our light and power increased according to projections through Eversource and increasing energy rates. And we are, we have one retiring custodian here at PBRS.
Robin?
Was that electrical rate around 6% or 7%, I think I heard at a previous meeting?
It differed by school just because of demand rates and stuff. So, the Eversource projections come directly from them based on kilowatt and prior demand uses. I don't have an exact percentage per school calculated out, but it was expected to be around 6%. I don't think it was quite that high. But in addition to what they projected, their projections for this particular year from last year were under. So, I used a multiplier to increase that conservatively based on how much more energy we're using this year than they projected we were going to when they gave us projections last year. And it totaled about $6,000 more than their projection across all four schools.
So, they...
When I used a multiplier to...
They, they under-projected last year, so we're just trying to be on the safe side this year.
Correct.
By expecting a 6% or more increase.
Exactly. And I know we have community projects and stuff that happen, but again, until we actually are seeing those savings, we can't budget for those kilowatt savings until we have those, a year history on those.
Maybe 2021.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Facilities. Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of that number for facilities, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, insurance and benefits. The FY20 budget for insurance and benefits is two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I have a motion? Discussion?
So the insurance rates for FY20 are staying the same for our Hampshire trust. Our GIC is expected to increase three percent. The increase in this particular line item is specific to the fact that we have a decrease in school choice revenue of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars expected in FY20 versus what we captured in FY19. And that is what we use to offset our health insurance expense. And we also had an increased unemployment rate from point five to point nine from eighteen to nineteen.
Okay, I'm gonna call the vote on insurance and benefits. All those in favor of that number for that line? Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Professional development. The FY20 budget for professional development is fifty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars. Do I have a motion?
No.
All right, discussion?
We reallocated professional development to be in line with its usage and purpose. Principal dues and subscriptions were increased to be in compliance with contractual obligations. And we adjusted our district mentoring line to be in compliance with the needs of the teachers going into FY20.
Okay, all those in favor of that number for that line, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, PVRS admin line for FY20, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Do I have a motion?
No.
Discussion?
This one's pretty simple. There are salary increases due to contractual obligations for the administrative assistant and currently there's a reduction of the dean of students' position and travel.
I just want to say I have a lot of concerns about cutting the dean of students' position. Since we've now had an announcement that our high school administrator is not going to continue with us after the end of the year, that would be a continuity in our building that I think would be helpful. And also, we're moving the, potentially moving the sixth grade up to pioneer and-
That will not be happening this coming year. It has to do with the district, the regional agreement.
Well, the, the legislation supersedes the district agreement.
Sue, unfortunately, the legislation, we found out today, it only supersedes 3B, but there are other parts of our regional agreement that state Pioneer Valley Regional School only houses grades seven to twelve. So that particular section would have to be amended as well and the legislation does not override that section.
Okay, all right. So, anyway, I have concerns about that, cutting that position.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Anyone else want to add any information to the thinking about that? Sharon?
I have concerns about cutting that position as well, but I'm in hopes that this budget is, is certainly not something that we're gonna have to live with for the rest of the year because there's gonna be other decisions made after this budget is voted on and then another step is taken to further, to further complicate the budget. And then I think we're gonna have to even complicate it more on a third look at it.
Okay.
And to me, on that third tier, it, it could look as though we could put that back in if we have to because I, we really shouldn't be without that position.
Mike?
I agree with Sharon. At this time, it makes sense to do this, but if moves happen, we have the opportunity to adjust and, and bring back staff if see fit, if the sixth grade does come up. But at this time, with the budget the way it is, I think it's probably, you know, the best for us.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of that number for that line, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, PVRS salaries. The budget amount for FY20 is one million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Do I have a motion?
No.
Okay, discussion?
The major decrease in this particular line item was because we moved those coaches over to the athletics budget. There are overall increases due to contractual obligations. There's a reduction of a one FTE special teacher and point FTE in the guidance counselor's line in this budget.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, all those in favor of that number for the PVRS salaries line for FY20, raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Abstentions? All right. PVRS supplies. PVRS supplies line for FY20 is seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
No.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
That line essentially stayed almost the same. There were some decreases in textbooks due to a decrease in requests from teachers. In addition, we are restoring library supplies with a small increase, decreasing guidance textbook due to lower need for materials and moving to online resources as well as budgeting for two Red Cat hearing systems and replacing two larger pieces of band equipment.
Okay, any more discussion on that line?
Does that include the AEDs for Pioneer?
The shared, the shared health supplies line currently is in the elementary supplies. We may, when we re, we, when we redo our chart of accounts and get more in line with DESI and UMS reporting requirements, we can split that out. But currently, that is the category that it is in for voting transfers and that's how the state has recommended that we keep our categories and vote our budget for this year.
Okay, all those in favor of that number for that line, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? And abstentions? Okay, the sped line for FY20 is currently at two million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars.
No.
Second.
Discussion?
All right, so again, contractual obligation increases. There were some tech items that were moved into the sped budget to be in line with their use and purpose. The sped transportation increased slightly due to annual increases in expenditures and student needs. Sped tuitions decreased overall due to two graduating students anticipated. The reductions in sped for staffing at PVRS was point five for a special needs teacher. ELL, we reduced from one FTE to point three. Berniston instructional assistant for sped was reduced three FTE and one additional that was requested for next year for preschool is not being filled at this time because we don't know the specific needs of children coming in. PRS was a reduction of point five. NES also had a reduction of three, which is the same as Berniston. Warwick was a reduction of one FTE and this was due to a student moving out of the district in, this year and not needing that aid for next year. And again, no, all special ed instructional assistant reductions were reviewed with the special ed director in line with student required services for FY20.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of that number for the sped line for FY20, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? And abstentions? Okay, technology. Technology budget for FY20 is currently four oh two, nine forty-one.
No.
Second.
Discussion?
This particular line had an overall increase due to the technology hardware lines increasing. This is to serve the purpose of moving towards a one-to-one student device initiative, replacing aging teacher devices and other hardware. This is gonna be done through a three-year implementation plan across the district and working towards creating technology replacements as part of our operating budget rather than capital expenditures and assessments. And we also captured some savings by switching vendors for our copiers when the contracts expired.
Sorry about that. I thought I had silenced it. It's a media silence, okay. So, where were we? Technology. All right, all those in favor of that number for that line, please raise your hand. Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, transportation? The transportation number for FY20 is seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Okay, discussion?
The increase in this particular line is simply due to an increase in our rate with Kosmeskis from three hundred and fifty-three dollars a day to three hundred and ninety-three per our new five-year contract that was awarded to them, signed by the school committee and approved by the commissioner of ed.
Okay, all those in favor of that number for this line, please raise your hand. Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, tuition. The tuition budget number for FY20 is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
This particular line comes directly from the governor's FY2020 first round budget and we are obligated to vote to this level. My estimate for this particular line is roughly eight hundred and three thousand dollars based on graduating students and students that would be leaving, but again, we have to vote to the governor's budget.
Okay.
And this is, it's based on current year enrollment that they get that.
October one. All right. All those in favor of that number for that line, please raise your hand.
But we're gonna give the state the side eye. I said, but we're gonna give the state the side eye.
Yeah, really. Okay, any opposed? And abstentions? And Tanya, you want a total as well? Yeah?
We don't need to vote on it.
You don't need to, have we done each category?
I don't think you need, you just need to vote by category. You can state that the budget's passed for the total.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
We also do need to vote the capital expenditure for Pioneer as well. It was in your assessments packet for the thirty-two thousand dollars to the towns and that was in the PowerPoint packet that everyone was given. It's eight thousand dollars for carpet and twenty-four thousand dollars for the Wi-Fi project here at the high school.
Okay, on the very last page of the PowerPoint, PVRS capital projects. So three separate numbers we'll vote, the eight thousand, the twenty-four.
It's just eight.
Oh, that, yeah, the eight.
I don't know how it's typically voted. I would just vote the-
This is just a description, right?
Yeah, I would just vote the total of the thirty-two thousand.
Okay. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? So it's the last page on the PowerPoint. Carpeting three rooms at eight thousand and Wi-Fi infrastructure update at twenty-four thousand. Okay, the PVRS capital projects amount for FY20 is thirty-two thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, well, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you, Tanya and John and the administrators and everyone that worked on that budget. Okay, so now we have item number four. Vote on the assessments to the towns. So on page two of the packet that we got tonight, right? That's the assessments.
And the capital assessment.
So, Tanya, I've never done this before, so you're gonna have to help me out here.
It's okay, neither have I. This particular sheet that you have in front of you shows what the minimum contribution is that is actually given to us by the state as well as their percentage of their above minimum contribution share, as well as their transportation that is split out. There is on the, well, there was on the backside of that, the five-year rolling average enrollment that these percentages were calculated on and that was also passed out at the, the last meeting and some of the ones prior to that.
That's this one, right?
Correct.
So this one has enrollment numbers.
So that's in the other packet.
Yeah.
So essentially what is done is there's a five-year rolling average of the students that are in the district currently and that's how the percentages are calculated for the above minimum contribution. I did put on the sheet because I, almost, to just kind of enforce the idea with this new regional agreement that's gonna be proposed tonight of moving to the foundation enrollment because you can see if you look the third line down at the top under minimum contribution, our foundation enrollment percentages for some of our towns are quite different than the town share based on the kids that are actually in the district. And that has to do with the fact that we have kids that are chartering out and choicing out that these, the towns aren't necessarily paying for through their above minimum contribution assessment. So that will just get those things more in line in the, down the road for now. But FY20's assessment is at the bottom for each of the towns and it totals nine million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, which is a one-point-six-five percent increase over last year for a total increase to all four towns of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So do we vote each town's amount or just those totals you just cited?
I believe it's just the total assessment to the town and then you'll need to vote the, the thirty-two, well, you already voted the thirty-two thousand capital, but just accept the calculations that were done, I would think, on the percentages.
Okay. Do I make the motion or does someone else make the motion? Okay, go for it.
I'll make the motion that we accept the nine million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Discussion?
Can I just ask about the language of that? I'm trying to recall whether we make the motion to accept the nine million or, or request the nine million, et cetera.
I think it's a vote to assess the nine million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to the four member towns of the regional district.
So not, not, not accept the amount, but assess the amount.
Yes. Request the assessed amount. Approve the assessed.
I'm just saying if we, if we all vote to accept it, that's not what we need to do.
Yeah, do you want to read the motion for us? Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have it to accept the assessments as calculated.
So we want to say, "Request the assessments as calculated" instead of "Accept." Another one. Well, that seems like a good point.
Or maybe we make the motion to vote to assess the four members-
Or maybe we make the motion to vote to assess the four-member towns the $9,357,510. I think that language probably is more in line.
So, instead of request, assess, vote to assess.
So...
Anne? She's working on it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Four members. Vote to assess the town.
Mm-hmm. 9357510. Yep.
And then the same with the capital when we get there.
We voted capital already.
You have to vote the assessment, though. It's a separate assessment to the town. They put it on their annual town meeting warrant as a separate article. So, you have to vote both of them, the calculation.
All right. So, we have a motion for the total assessment. Let's see if, yeah, if there's any discussion. The mic's seconded. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. So, I don't have that paper you have in your hand. Should you want me to look at it?
You should have this packet with your school committee packet.
Oh, I do have it.
Yep. So, this is the calculation. The capital is assessed differently than the operating. In our current regional agreement, and I attached the language to the back of it, half of the assessment is based on their equalized value, and the other half is based on their enrollment. So, you'll see the calculations done on the front here based on the most current equalized value from this DLS multiplied by half. So, their 50% comes from there, so, and then their enrollment was also calculated as a percentage and added together to get the 100% of each town's capital assessment percentage for FY '20, and then allocated to the 32,000.
Okay. So, does everybody understand how that capital assessment is broken out? Okay. So, we are, we are actually voting to accept the breakout of this assessment.
I would vote to assess the $32,000 to the towns per the calculation, just like you did the operating.
Okay. Should I read the numbers in, into the record?
I would just say $32,000 assessment of 32,000 capital to the town.
To be broken out per the regional agreement. Do you want me to put that?
Or to accept the calculation, however you want to do that.
I move that we assess the town $32,000 for capital projects at PVRS to be broken out per the regional agreement.
All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Or abstentions? Okay. The next item is number five. Field trip to New York City and Boston for exchange students and host students.
Will you come down?
Sure. Come on down.
Didn't we address this last meeting?
This is the, no. No.
Didn't go by the same page?
No.
Hi. My name is Emily Dean, and most of you remember me from being that teacher that went on Sped. One of my promises was I will create numerous opportunities for international exchange of teachers and students. So, I delivered on part of that so far. We just came back from the trip to Spain. We spent $850 each. Really nice trip for 10 days in Spain.
Wow.
And stayed with families, did a number of excursions to Valencia Alicante and Barcelona and Madrid. And now, those students and host teachers are going to be picked up by me tomorrow. And they'll be here for 10 days. So, we are planning numerous activities, maple sugaring locally and going up to Mount Snow, but we also have a trip to Boston for their departure and New York City this coming weekend. So, it's part of our contract that we have to get school board approval for any overnight excursions. So, I'm here to ask for your permission to take 20 lovely children to Boston and New York.
So, can you just give us a little insight into how it's all structured and...
Sure.
You know, monitored and all that?
Yeah. So, we are leaving from the school on Saturday morning, driving down to New Haven and hopping on a train there. We'll be staying at a hostel in New York City. It's a really nice hostel, 34th Street, Central Park, so it's, I think we have two 10-room dorms that are just us, and then one six-room for the teachers, basically, and two of the students. And then, we'll be going to Times Square, Central Park, Staten Island Ferry. Just trying to keep the cost low, but get the kids, some of our students haven't been to New York. So, for all of our kids, it'll be a really great experience.
Karen?
I, do you think we get some kind of itinerary or a little bit sooner?
Sorry.
Well, I'd like to see you do that too for us before you just shoot something out, but...
Absolutely.
...to all of us so that we have an idea where you all are, where you're going from then, that kind of thing.
I honestly did not want to go to New York. I wanted to go to the hockey games and some of the other things that are happening locally, but...
I think New York's a good choice.
It's gonna be a great choice. It's just, yeah.
Yeah. I would just like to know where they are and...
Okay. I'm more than happy to do that. I actually have it all in an itinerary that I just sent to the teacher there, so...
Any other questions?
Yes.
If you sent it to the teacher there, it's probably in Spanish, could you send it to us in English?
Yeah. I promise I will send it in English.
Thank you.
Yeah. No problem at all.
I thought that was understood.
Any other questions?
Well, I wanted to make things a little bit like it.
All right.
Will you report out on it after you get back?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Or you can send us some pictures.
You'll see, actually, as of tomorrow, there's gonna be a bulletin board out in the main lobby welcoming this group of kids coming, and a bunch of the pictures from the trip we just took. So, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
How many students do you have coming in, exchanging, and for how long will they be here?
There's 12 students and two teachers, and they'll be here from March 7th until the 17th.
Sharon, did you wanna mention that?
Nice presentation when you get back would be great.
Sounds good to me. Actually, I would rather the students come and present because they're the ones that are really excited about it.
Yeah. Sounds wonderful.
I'm tired. They're excited.
All right. All those in favor of supporting the field...
Wait, we haven't got a motion.
Oh, sorry.
But I will move that the school committee approve the trip.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the field trip to New York and Boston for the group from Spain and Pioneer? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Thank you very much for your support. And just for future, like, my department is gonna keep growing, I think, because I'm gonna keep having more and more programs like this, so I'm hoping that you'll keep looking at maybe replacing that Spanish teacher that was cut. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, next regular Pioneer meeting is Thursday, March 14th, 7 o'clock in the library. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All those in favor? Okay. Thanks, everyone, for helping us get this done on time.